Turn on here. Turn on here. Thanks. Good evening. I'd like to call to order the regular governing board meeting of the Jefferson Elementary School District, June 8th, 2016. It is 7:00 PM. I want to make an announcement right now that the planning commission will be meeting following this meeting at 8:00 PM, which means that our adjournment is hard and fast. In order to accomplish our board business tonight, the board should consider the following. Oh, I guess I can cover that in a minute, but we will be shifting some things around in order to see that we are done in time to allow the planning commission their time. Could we have members present, please?
Shaquille Ali.
Aye, here.
Manufo Liainga Anawahi.
Here.
Marie Brizbella.
Here.
Clayton Koo.
Here.
Rebecca Douglas.
Here. And Mr. Brizbella, could you lead us in the pledge?
Please stand.
Put your right hand over your heart, ready, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, and we will take just a very quick moment to review our board meeting guidelines. We do have them.
I think all of us should agree to one, two, three, four, five, six.
We will keep our remarks.
Six, yes.
We'll keep our remarks.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, so, bringing us to the approval of the agenda, so I wanted to say that in order to make sure we accomplish the essential board business tonight, the board should consider the following modifications when before we approve the agenda, that we will move, could move all action items to the consent agenda with the exception of item 8E, move the communications section to after section 12, and we will table or remove items 9C and our closed session item. So if I could have.
I'll make the motion.
Okay, have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so we will open our public hearings. We have three public hearings. Number A, public hearing on 2016-2017 Local Control Accountability Plan. The governing board of the Jefferson Elementary School District will hear public comments on the local control accountability plan, and that is open at 7:03 PM. And I do not have any speaker cards for that. Okay, so the LCAP, I'll just finish reading it then. The LCAP is an accountability plan that requires districts to disclose how local control funding formula, LCFF funds, are spent to provide high-quality education programs. Since there are no speaker cards, we will close the hearing at 7:04 PM. And item B, public hearing on fiscal year 2016-17 Proposed Budget. The governing board of the Jefferson Elementary School District will hear public comments on the fiscal year 2016-2017 Proposed District Budget, opening that hearing at 7:04 PM. And I have no speaker cards for this one either, so we can close it at 7:04 and a half PM. And item C, public hearing on district reserves in excess of minimum requirements. The governing board of the Jefferson Elementary School District will hear public comments on the district reserves in excess of minimum requirements, opening at 7:05 PM. And I have a speaker card from Ms. Melinda Dart.
Good evening, Melinda Dart, AFT 3267. And we don't have time to applaud tonight. And I look forward to all of us in the next year gaining understanding over our budget. And I do know that there are several points of view, at least two, on our budget, but from my point of view, you can't end the year, every year, with a surplus and then put that away in reserve and then say that we're headed for financial disaster. And you can't say that, if you do that every year for nine years, you can't call that one-time-only money. And you know that my reason for having this point of view is that I believe we need to have a vision. We need to be able to pay teachers a fair raise so that we can keep them here. And I'll close with that. Thanks.
I have no other speaker cards for this hearing, so I will declare the hearing closed at 7:07 PM. Okay, we moved the communications to the end, so this brings us to the approval of the consent agenda. We need a motion to approve that with all the added items that were moved to it.
I move that we approve the consent agenda with all added items.
I'll second it. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye. I'm sorry, we have a resolution, and we should take a roll call on that.
That's right. Okay, could we have a roll call vote on that, please?
Mr. Ali.
Aye.
Ms. Liainga Anawahi.
Aye.
Mrs. Brizbella.
Aye.
Mr. Koo.
Aye.
Dr. Douglas.
Aye. Okay. So, that brings us to item 8E, our tentative agreement with AFT Local 3267 and the Jefferson Elementary School District. The administration recommends the approval of the tentative agreement and MOU for the 2016-2017 school year between AFT Local 3267 and the JESD, pending approval by the San Mateo County Office of Education and ratification of agreement by union members. I have a speaker card on this, Ms. Melinda Dart.
Hello again, Melinda Dart, AFT 3267. I would like to report that our local passed our tentative agreement, and we are glad to have reached one. There was a period where it looked like we might not, and we were surprised by that. We didn't expect that to happen. We lost some amazing teachers this year, and I want to acknowledge that. Teachers who were dedicated and also were from the community and brought diversity to our district and were really important to the children they served. So I really want to make sure, I would like us to have a vision in our district, a vision of attracting and keeping the best teachers, as we say, is our goal in the LCAP, and the best and diverse teachers in our district. And in order to do that, we felt this year that we needed a fair raise of 4%. So it's not going to be any secret that next year that means we need at least a 5%, and then I believe we need a 4% the year after that. And we don't see any reason the district can't afford that, and that, of course, will be an ongoing discussion, but we don't, we don't want to be secretive about it. We want to lay it out right now. We're just ending this bargaining, and even though we're all a little exhausted from it, I guess I'm starting already with next year, because we have to, we have to start now to plan, to think, how can we pay teachers so that we can keep them here? There's money left over at the end of this year. Guess what? That can go into healthcare next year. Let's have a vision of success, not of empty classrooms. That's the nightmare vision that I have sometimes in the middle of the night, and I know some of you probably share that with me. Martin Luther King did say that budgets are a moral document, so let's show what we value. Let's value our students who need teachers, teachers and classified staff who are paid well enough and who can be part of the communities they serve. Let's commit to that vision. Thank you.
Is there any discussion of this item for board members, or questions, clarifications, or we can have a motion to approve the tentative agreement?
Well, I'm glad that we came to an agreement on this, and I listened to what you said, and I'll keep all of that here so that we can work together. So with that, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the tentative agreement with AFT Local 3267 and us, of course. And I won't read all of this, but as we're.
There we go. And a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
No opposition? Okay. Just realized the one item that was not listed, item F.
Item F.
It was E.
Oh, sorry. Item F is not an action item, it's an information item, so we're going to address it now.
Right, it was there, it just was not, yeah, okay. So we do, that does bring us item F, draft language for resolution on voter-approved local funding initiative. This is information and discussion for us.
Yeah, at a previous meeting, we did hear about the results of a voter survey, and we were directed to continue moving forward with developing some language around what a resolution would look like. We've worked with our bound counsel, Stradling, Yocan, Roth, and as well as TBWB Strategies to come up with a first draft of what this language would be. And if you saw on your back up there, it's basically in three parts. One is a resolution with all of the warehouses that establishes the purposes for why we would want a local funding initiative, and then second part is the legal aspect of it. And Mr. Hewer is here today to respond to that part, and that legal aspect has more wording as well as 75-word draft excerpt of what needs to go in the ballot, as well as a full ballot text. So it's appropriate at this time, if you've read it and you think you have some questions about it, you can ask them at this point. Also, in the next week or two, if you happen to read it again and you had another question, or you would like to see something perhaps revised, you can also let me know. And the full board will be considering this for adoption in July, I believe it's July 27th, board meeting.
Is it due first week of August?
It must be adopted by the, sometime at the beginning of August, so that we can turn it into the elections office, and I can turn it into the San Mateo County Office of Education Superintendent to direct all the different pieces that have to happen, so.
Okay, as long as we have time, we meet those deadlines.
Yeah, there should be time.
Are there any questions about it or comments? I thought it covered it pretty well.
It was pretty comprehensive.
Yeah, and I didn't find any typos.
That's wonderful. We can thank Mr. Hewer and his office for doing all of that work. So if the board, you know, at some point, you realize that there's something, intentionally, I think it's written broadly to incorporate all of the things we might want to accomplish should this pass, the board would have deeper discussions about how to appropriate those funds specifically, and it could change year by year, or it could be an ongoing plan.
Okay. Yeah, I, if there is no further comment, then we will move along, and as Mr. Brizbella says, if you have anything when you look at it closer or look at it a second time, let him know so that we can address it before we adopt it in July. Okay, item C was tabled.
We would be at 10E now.
Yes, it says section 10, Business, item E, the budget development presentation. Ms. Kessler will do the Reader's Digest condensed version.
One and a half minutes.
Yeah. You will get a full presentation for you to read and address later, but we will go through this rather quickly.
Okay.
Good evening. Yeah, you'll be really happy. I'll go very quick. So all this information you've already seen. These are just the assumptions we've talked about numerous times, and you can review them. They're pretty standard, or exactly what I talked about last time. The only thing I want to say is that enrollment is going up a little bit since the budget was put together, so that's good. This is our LCFF target. This is the amount that we're supposed to get. This is what, our floor is what we're getting right now, and this is the difference. So when we fund 54.84%, when the state funds that, we'll get an additional 3.4 million, which will bring us 55 million next year. That will leave 2.8 million left of the unfunded gap, so we'll almost be completely funded. So what's included in the budget? Well, what we're doing is we're maintaining all the programs that we've put into place in the last few years. As you know, since the LCAP started, all the SEC grant, additional funds that we received in putting them towards those students, all these increased services that we've done over the past years, and more. And then what's new this next year are the three additional elementary school teachers to keep the grades from splitting, one additional music teacher, an additional special day classes. You know, we're investing in special day classes at our district so we can bring them back from the county, because the county classes are becoming more and more expensive all along. So it is an investment that in the future years, we hope, will cost us less. And then Chromebooks for all sixth graders that will, each year, the sixth graders will get it, and they'll age out after three years, and we'll have to continue to get those Chromebooks, because they, our insurance won't be longer than three years to cover them, and certainly they'll be breaking down. So this follows the LCAP, as the budget is strictly in place to follow the LCAP, which you approve, well, which has had a public hearing, and you've learned about it in the last meeting. Okay, other significant factors that I'd like to simply point out, the next year's 16-17 Proposed Budget does include one and a half million dollars of one-time funds that the governor is hoping to give us, and we'll see if legislature gives it to us as well. I believe they probably will. In the expenditure area, given the assumptions that you saw on the earlier slides, in order to meet our 3% reserve for economic uncertainty in the out-years of 1819 and 1920, we will have included in the multi-year projection that you'll see on the next page, are for 1819, 3.6 million dollars worth of cuts, and in 1920, 4 million, 4.85 million dollars worth of cuts. Given these assumptions, now, of course, as we move forward, there may be more one-time funds in the future years. There may be more other state funding or federal funding. Expenditures may come in lower than planned. ADA may go up or down. So the revenues that we will get or won't get, or expenditures that we will make or not make, will affect those out-years. So currently, the way the gap funding is planned with the COLA, the amount that we'd be getting next year, the additional amount, will basically cover step and column and the change in stirs and pirs, and that would be it. So, as I said, this is given that these assumptions are correct, and these always change, of course, but if they are, we will have to, we would have to make these cuts in future years. Additionally, in this proposed budget, there are no negotiated increases in it, because by the time we receive the negotiated increases and signed everything, there was no time. We only got back today from the county that they accepted our AB 1200. We couldn't incorporate that into this version of the proposed budget for 1617 at this time. However, at the next board meeting, when we come, it will be included in that, and so for the AFT bargaining in it. And if we're, so that will be included. So here is the multi-year projection, and as you can see, this is where we will have our expenditures exceed our revenues in the budget, and these two years here, in the expenditures here, again, this has a 3.6 million dollar cut that is not to any specific thing, but we have to do that in order to meet our 2, 3% reserve for economic uncertainty, because it's, it's not there. This is our reserve for economic, well, our end balance, and then here's our Fund 17 end balance that's not committed. Together, these will make up 2%, up 3%, I'm sorry, for reserve for economic uncertainty, but only after the, in this one, cuts of 4.85 million, and this 3.6 million. This is how our fund balance looks as the years go on. Now, mind you, again, if we have carryover, if things aren't spent, that will increase our fund balance. If we have higher revenues, that will increase our fund balance. On the other hand, if the state doesn't fund at the level that we're planning, then we'll have lower funds, fund balance. So this is using the more conservative School Services of California funding level. Using the state funding level, it does look a little bit better. This still has, this still has that 3.6 million dollar cut and 4.18, 4.85 million dollar cut, but the end balance, as you see right here, we stopped deficit spending. So it does improve it by, it's a $200,000 improvement by the time you get out here. And cash would look like, our fund balance would look like So, next steps, the board has to adopt a budget before the end of this month, and we had the public hearing already. We have a public hearing for LCAP, and we'll be coming back to you with the revised budget to include the AFT agreement. It will then go to the county office of ed, and they will either approve it or not, in which case we'd have to make some modifications. I don't expect that to happen. The state will pass its budget by the end of this month, and then within 45 days, if it significantly affects us, we will adjust the budget accordingly and let you know how that budget was adopted, was adjusted. So was that fast enough? Do I have any questions?
He looked at me.
Well, you weren't here last time.
Yeah, this is.
A lot to digest.
Yeah, I have questions, but I don't want to ask them tonight, I guess. It's going to take a long time.
Okay.
I don't have questions, but I appreciate you including that in this proposed budget that what was not included was the negotiated salary and benefit increases, but we will see that next round, because I think it's important that everyone sees that, especially since we have been through negotiations. So I appreciate that comment, because I know that outside of seeing it, I was already thinking that it wasn't here, but I remember you had mentioned that we missed that cutoff, so.
Plus, until you approve it, we can't put it in.
Right, right.
So now it's proofed, now it can be put in.
Right.
But it would be presumptuous as well, even if I had time, to put it in before it's actually approved by you.
So that raises a question for me, which is, does that impact our bottom-line figures?
Yes.
Yes, so in fact, we are even more overspending ourselves.
Correct.
Okay, so we're really counting on the fact that we don't normally spend everything we budget to get us through this, because otherwise we could end up in hot water.
But it has to be more than just that.
Right.
Because it's, as you get to those out-years, that's a very large amount.
Yeah, we're overspending by a pretty wide margin, just a little concerning.
Yes.
Okay. That was my big question.
I like the, I like the fact that we need to look at our budget very closely, line for line, which I don't think we actually see every penny where it's going, so that maybe we can suggest, maybe some suggestions as well, how you can trim the budget a little so that we won't have to, to, here, if, 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 if. There's too many ifs in this.
Well, of course.
Yeah, so, but we should be prepared to maybe if we have to cut something that's just, you know, something that doesn't touch the children, or it doesn't affect, that we can use it for education, and also use it towards if we decide we do want to keep the funding going for our employees, but we need to see what we can cut out.
Right.
I mean, I don't think we have a new car or something like that, but I mean, I think we should look at our budget to see what can we do without so we can keep what we really need.
Right, and the point of showing all those out-years is to give the board and the district the opportunity to act and not react, to thoughtfully consider what would be the best thing to do. We have time.
I think by September, October, we'll get a better sense of certainly what's been passed and what our expenditures should be for the next school year, and then by January, we should get a sense if the governor is recommending any greater funding for schools, because I don't think we are the only district that will barely be able to make stirs and pirs and step and column, given the level of funding available. So maybe there will be some additional funding, and certainly in the out-years, and I don't think that year is there yet, but if the extension of Proposition 30 passes, we should see at least no new reductions in those, that 2021 year.
And I would like to just point out one thing here quickly in this. So in this budget, we, well, it's showing 1617. It's not showing 1516 in the current year, but in the current year, we have 3.2 million dollars of one-time funds, that if we did not receive this year, we would, we would definitely be deficit spending this year.
Which was what we budgeted, was deficits, strategic use of our reserves, which was only not happening, because, once again, the governor gave us the last-minute one-time funding.
The one-time funds.
It would be really, really nice if the state would just give us our money on an ongoing basis, so we could plan reasonably and rationally.
It would be nice.
Yeah, not that you can do anything about that. That was for, that was for the state.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, if there are no further questions or discussions, since this was purely an informational item, move on to the next informational item.
Thank you, thank you to.
Actually, was that it? I thought there was.
Yeah, I believe we would now be at communications section, if we have any speaker cards.
Yes, and we do have speaker cards. So, yeah, so that does bring us to communications, with time to communicate and still get out of the room in time for the planning commission. Yeah, is it? Yeah, 7:45 ideally, so they can make the transition and start their meeting on time. Okay, so I do have cards for persons wishing to address the board. Ms. Ron Johnson.
Good evening. Thank you. I had something I was gonna say, but it's changed. I listened to the budget report, and I was gonna talk about vision, and it's still, it's a subject I would like to talk about. I looked on all of your faces up there during the budget report and saw the look of worry that was on each one. Every year, we have a budget that looks dire, and every year, the school district comes out looking great. The vision that I would like to see you up there and the administration here take on is the vision to have a shift in priorities. Instead of saying, okay, here is our budget, what can we do with the teachers and with the students and with the services to make our budget work? We need a vision that says, okay, here's what the students need, here's what the teachers need, let's work the budget to make it work. And, I mean, I'm looking at what was handed out here, and I'm looking at, even with a conservative budget, it was looking at if, if things are very bad and don't do very well, at 2019, 2020, we still have a fund balance of $1.7 million. So that's, I mean, this is money that we should be looking at spending. The number-one priority of the district is to provide the services for, first off, the students, and part of that services is to provide what the teachers also need, and the, all the employees of the district. And that should be the top priority. It shouldn't, the district shouldn't be budget-run. Yes, budgets are important. Julie should be obsessing on the budget, that's her job, but it's not your job. We need to look at the district as, here's what our students need, let's make it happen, and we'll figure out a way to make it happen. Thank you.
I know we do not respond to those comments, I just want to clarify that we are legally mandated to maintain the 3% reserve for economic uncertainties, so that is not our choice. I have a second speaker card. Christine Novas, on the, our speech and language pathologist.
Hi, good evening, everyone. I came to talk about two different items. For those of you who don't know me, my name's Christina Novas, and I'm a speech-language pathologist for this district. And the first item I wanted to talk about was, I was able to organize another sensory-friendly movie screening at Century Theaters in Daly City. It will be on Saturday, June 18th, in the morning around 10:00 a.m., and we will be watching Finding Dory, which is a story about a forgetful fish trying to find her long-lost Sensory-friendly screenings allow individuals with sensory sensitivities, i.e. to light, sound, touch, taste, or smell, to enjoy the movie-going experience. The lights will be turned up, and the volume will be turned down, and just that slight adjustment makes the experience that much more enjoyable for these individuals and their families. Many of our families aren't able to take their children to regular movies because they get overwhelmed, and they're expected to sit quietly in the dark with all this loud noise going on. We had an event on April 31st, a sensory-friendly movie, and we had a great turnout, and to me, that just shows the need in this community for events like this. So I encourage everyone here, if you can come, on Saturday, June 18th, in the morning, you can check with the theater for the cost of tickets and the time. When we did this last, last time, it was only $8 a ticket. The second thing that I would like to talk about is, I am an agenda item tonight because I'm resigning, and this is very bittersweet for me. I didn't think I'd get emotional, but... I've worked in this district for three years, and I love my coworkers that I work with, I love the students, I love what I do, and I was on the negotiating team this year, and I felt like the process was so damaging to me as a professional. So, what I leave you with in my last 15 seconds is that I hope for better for this community and this school district, I really do. And I want to thank everyone that came, my friends and colleagues who came to support me. I really miss working here, so thank you all so much.
Administrator comments? Let's go beat, Ms. Kessler, do you have anything to add?
No, I'll pass.
Okay. Hi. Ms. McCoolick?
Okay.
Okay. Board member, acknowledgements and commendations, if there's anything?
Yes, thanks for your comments, and I wish you well, of course. I wanted to talk about teachers and the great job that all of our middle-school teachers are doing. We had our graduation today at Polisita Middle School, and this was my fifth year attending, and I really felt the community's happiness today. All the students were happy, all their families, and I was very pleased to find out that 100% of the eighth graders walked across the stage today. And for any of you who've been in education for a long time, that's an amazing feat. I'll just leave it there. Thanks for coming, everyone.
I miss today's graduation due to other obligations. I look forward to tomorrow's graduation ceremonies. I'm glad to hear that we had 100% graduation at TRP. Every year, one of the hats I wear is as an advocate in the community, and I work with a lot of parents, and every year, I get at least 10 calls from families throughout the Bay Area for their children who will not be able to participate in promotion and graduation exercises for a variety of reasons. Many times, it's the students neglect and/or families, but most of the time, it's because of a lot of other reasons. Reasons that, as administrators and educators, and mostly people that serve in the community to advocate, can do a better job in. So to hear that we saw 100% of our kids participate today is, is very refreshing, and it's wonderful to hear. I know we're not supposed to react, I, every meeting, leave it to me to teeter-totter that line, but as a human being, it was important for me to stand up and commend your service, Christina, and that's why I stood today. It wasn't to not be obedient, but it was to, to commend you and celebrate the work that you did here with, with our district for the past three years. I've heard great things about you, and I, I hope that your spirit and your conviction to serve our students and our communities remains, even though you will physically be leaving our district. I hope that that, that will remain. I'm very hopeful for that. I continue to hear that at the board meetings, and I thank you, and I thank everyone who continues to work in that spirit. I know we all do, because that's why we're here, and I thank you for that reminder. It's a reminder for me to know that I need to, as a board trustee, that I need to have that same conviction, so I thank you for that. Thank you for leaving that tonight, I appreciate that.
Well, Christina, I'm gonna wish you lots of success, and we will truly miss you, as we all have heard so much about you, and maybe somewhere down the road, you might be able to come back. I hope. I'm taking a lot of this emotionally, sorry, and I'm not supposed to say anything, and maybe we can work on that law, because how can we sit here and listen and not respond? So I think we're all hearing very closely what's being said, and again, I still think that we need to look at our budget far more closely, and make sure that we look at our vision, and look at what we're gonna do to make things better for everybody. So I just leave it at that. And I don't remember if I had anything I was gonna say anyway from before, but we'll save for the next meeting, because, yeah, we don't have time.
I want to say thank you for your service. Your presentations have been great in the past, and just for a short time that I've been on the board, it's been educational, and I'm looking forward to, because it's a sensory movie. I'm trying to reschedule my day that day, it's actually come, so I'll try my best to go, and then, we went to the TRP graduation, it was great. I also went to the MX Tobias fifth grade graduation earlier in the day, too, and I had a great time there, so I want to wish them and everybody else happy graduation.
Well, I don't really have anything to add, Mr. Ali, beat me to what I was going to shout out as a really great accomplishment from TRP, and congratulations to them, so I won't add anything, and we'll...
I do have, one thing I should say. When they introduced all the people at the graduation, and everything was going on, Mr. Valenti got a lot of...
Sure did.
That shows you the love that students and parents have for you.
I was just gonna say that.
But at least we know that they, they all had that feeling for you, so that felt very good.
Yes.
And I think you can take a little bit of credit for that, 100% on those eighth graders, too.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, okay, Mr. Vidalis, correspondence and comments, none, okay.
Did anybody write down what time, what time is moving?
She said 10, or 10-ish.
10-ish?
I assume because the theaters sometimes get weird about like 10:03 and a half a.m., so, yeah. Okay, so then...
Is it back to us?
That's back, yeah, as you say, that brings us back to our final thing, which is our reflections on the guidelines. We have about two minutes to do that, if anybody has any real issues with our guideline.
Just one, this is not a response, but this is my comment about negotiations in general. I've been actually to meetings and to one conference on collaboration, and it's my thought that the system itself is flawed. It's not our district, it's not any individual up here. We all want the same thing for our students and for our community, but we're, we're dealing with a system that was set up before I even knew anything about it, and I, I'm not very happy with the way it goes either. So it's, it's gonna be a lot of soul-searching and adjustments that need to be made. I don't know what's gonna happen, but I know something will happen. And I focused on keeping my comments brief. I can't even find it right now.
There were six.
Yeah. We will keep our remarks brief and to the point, so that all opinions can be expressed, and hopefully, people were able to express themselves, even with the time constraint. You know, we're one big family here, and we're gonna work this out.
Thank you. I originally picked that one, but I went with hearing some of the remarks this evening. We will work toward the future, learning from the past, so we're all still learning, we're constantly learning. So you coming here at every meeting, speaking to us at the meetings, outside of the meetings, through a variety of means of communication is important, so that's how we learn to do a better job, so thank you.
So, I think we mostly all agreed on that one of us keeping our remarks brief and to the point, and so I think we did that as much as we could, and I thank Teal for saying your comments, even though you took all our comments, I'm just kidding, but it, it brought us all focused on, what you said was, I'm sure what most of us are thinking the same thing, so we could do a ditto instead of repeating the same thing. And as far as the one that you picked, well, I think that we need to, once in a while, look at what has been done in the past as well, and see if there isn't another way that we can react to all this.
I selected, we will listen actively to ideas, we will listen openly without preparing responses. A lot of tonight was about kind of taking the information and trying best to dispel that for future purposes and actions, so I thought that kind of worked well for the meeting.
Well, naturally, my focus this evening was on keeping things brief and moving, although I was also, my eye was straying to the one right above it about staying focused on our goals and avoiding getting sidetracked, which leads to the same end, but also, I think, plays into the bigger-picture issues that we're working on with working out budgets and negotiations, and I certainly hope we're making some success with that. And, spot on the target they asked us for. I believe that takes us to the end of our meeting, and I will adjourn us at 7:45 p.m.